Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we agree with the staff on both these matters. And in one motion, we'll accept that neither of these things are regional impact, have a regional impact.
Is there a second for Alister's motion? Desiree got you first. Second by Ms. Fault. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Let's see, we're six tonight, 6-0-0 to agree on that. Jillian, I have a question about, in general, these regional impact recommendations. If the Board had determined that any project is of regional impact, and there's got to be sort of a delay in the processing of the rest of the application while those notifications take place?
Yes.
So when we see them on the same night as the application's coming, obviously, we've got a staff recommendation that leans in a particular direction, but we're also doing that in order to process their applications as quickly as possible within the amount of time we have from when their submission is?
Yes.
Why do we see them at the same time?
Sometimes, there's not enough time to get them on an agenda before they're going to be on that agenda for regional impact determinations, depending on when they come in. So it's just a matter of noticing and the timeline.
Okay. And I assume that if you were making a recommendation that something was of regional impact, we'd treat the agenda differently?
Yeah, and our recommendation for that item would probably be different, too.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any other comments or questions for planning and zoning or for the staff? Seeing none, item three on our agenda is Anheuser-Busch LLC as the applicant and owner. And this is a review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a modification to a previously approved site plan to construct four building additions totaling 70,035 square feet and associated site improvements at the existing brewery. The site is located at 221 Daniel Webster Highway, in the I-1 Industrial Aquifer Conservation Districts and 100 and 500-year flood hazard areas, tax map 3D, lot 31. Jillian, anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Yeah, this applicant is proposing to amend a site plan that the Board approved in April of 2015. The amendment will include a fourth building addition and associated site improvements. It will increase the square footage from 53,000 to 70,035. And it's being made to allow for increased brewing and packaging capabilities. They're seeking the same waivers with the addition of a waiver for recording. At your seats, you should have found an updated waiver request letter, and that includes number five. That was not on the one that was in your packets.
Thank you, Jillian. We've also extended the period of time for them to meet conditions of approval. Isn't that correct?
It was extended, which is why we put the same time period for meeting precedent conditions.
Perfect. I got you. Thank you. Please introduce yourself and tell us about the project.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. For the record, my name's Tom Zajak. I'm a civil engineer with Hayner Swanson in Nashua. I'm here tonight with Tom Jokerst, Ryan Hudgens, and Kyle Southwell, all of Anheuser-Busch. As Jillian stated, we're here tonight seeking application acceptance and final approval for an amended site plan for the proposed brewery expansion at Anheuser-Busch. I'd like to give a brief project summary, and then we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Please proceed.
As shown on the plan over here on the easel, the Anheuser-Busch facility is located at 221 Daniel Webster Highway. That's lot 31, map 3D. It's zone I-1 Industrial. It's also located in the Aquifer Protection and Flood Hazard Districts. The total lot area is about 200 acres. We're abutted by various industrial, commercial, and undeveloped properties. Anheuser-Busch owns an additional 100-acre property, lot 32, adjacent to the Merrimack River, which is separated from the subject parcel by the railroad. Anheuser-Busch Brewery has been in use since the 1970s. It's one of 12 breweries nationwide. The northerly part of the site is the existing brewery development. It takes up about 60 acres of the site with a current building area of around 600,000 square feet. The central portion of the site contains the athletic fields, the tour areas, and the stables. And the southerly part of the site is wooded and undeveloped. The brewery operates about 200 full-time employees, which cover three shifts. Access to the site is provided at the existing signalized intersection on Daniel Webster Highway. The main body of the site is generally flat and sits about 40 feet lower than Daniel Webster Highway. Employee and visitor parking is located in the front of the site and contains about 721 parking spaces. The site is serviced by municipal sewer and watered by Penachek Waterworks. The proposed project is an amendment to the April 2015 site plan approval. We are now proposing four building additions totaling about 70,000 square feet, so that's an about 11% increase at full buildout. I do want to point out that we are proposing to construct this project in two phases. Phase one involves the brewery and grains handling area. We tried to delineate those clearly on the plans. The brewery addition is shown in the attached rendering that I distributed to the Board tonight. That should give you a pretty good idea of what we're proposing there. It's about phase one. Addition is about 13,000 square feet, and the building is about 65 feet in height. We hope to start construction on phase one in the spring of this year and hopefully complete by the end of the year. Phase two of the project is the packaging, warehousing areas, along with the expansion of the phase one brewery addition. Our goal is to keep these permits active, although phase two is under internal review and decisions to move this part of the project forward has not yet been made. Associated site improvements, we have new loading, parking, and sidewalk areas. We've got some utility relocation, especially within the courtyard area, and we're also proposing two stormwater management areas. Just to give you an overall idea of what the project entails, we are disturbing about 5.8 acres on the site, which is only about 3%. And like last time, I wanted to point out that we have no new disturbed areas on the site. All of the area we're touching is within the existing development. One item I wanted to touch upon real quick is stormwater. We did submit a revised stormwater study to the town and to DES AOT for review. As I represented back in April, the existing drainage system on the site drains to a headwall outlet at the southeast corner of the site, which empties into the Merrimack River. There's various measures in place to prevent the discharge in the case of leaks and spills on-site, including a dry weather pump system at the headwall outlet. Our project adds about two acres of impervious area. Our goal with stormwater management is to improve the quality and reduce the quantity of stormwater leaving the site from within the project's sub-drainage areas. This is accomplished through the use of deep sump catch basins, oil-water separators, and two subsurface infiltration systems. Since the previous approval, we've added a second stormwater management area in the courtyard to accommodate phase one of our development. The net result, which is the same as last time we were before you, is a decrease in peak flows and volumes leaving the site compared with the pre-development condition. And I do want to point out that the stormwater study and the AOT application has been reviewed and approved by DES. We are requesting five waivers tonight. Four of them are the same as we requested in April. Unless you ask me to, I was going to just address the fifth waiver item. This is the revised letter dated yesterday, January 4th. Waiver request five is to waive the requirement that the approved site plan be recorded at the Registry of Deeds. This is section 7.06A. I will paraphrase, and essentially, because we are asking for a waiver of the boundary of the property, a licensed land surveyor cannot stamp this plan. So this is kind of, in effect, a result of waiver request number one. I've cited in here two different RSA examples of why we cannot do that, but essentially, because we are asking for a waiver of the boundary, our surveyor cannot stamp the plan because he has not performed the boundary survey. So in summary, we believe the application is complete and conforms to the site plan regulations. We agree to the conditions and stipulations outlined in the staff report, and we seek your approval tonight. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for your presentation. What's the will of the Board with respect to determining whether the application is complete?
I so move.
Is there a second for Desiree's motion?
Second.
By Counselor Mahon. Any discussion on completeness? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 6-0-0 to find the application complete. Would the Board like to enter a dialogue with the applicant about the application in general, the waivers, or perhaps do a public hearing? Which way do we want to go? Can do them all anyway? All right, let's see if there's any questions and discussion for the applicant as things stand now. Are there any? Nelson?
Yeah, I'll start off. I'm wanting to know this...
Nelson, I don't think your microphone's on.
Okay. First, with regard to the recent waiver request, in your testimony, you stated that this can't be recorded at the registry because it does not have a perimeter survey at this time. Yet there is a perimeter survey of this property on file at the registry already. Is that not right?
That's possible. I'm sure there is. It was not prepared by our office or our licensed surveyor, so he cannot stamp the plan.
Okay, you didn't do the original plan, then. Is that what you're saying?
We don't have a boundary survey of this property at our office, no.
Okay. All right, so that means it won't get filed at the registry at all, none of this?
Correct. Normally, you know, we have 30 sheets or 20 sheets in our site plan set. Normally, we will record sheet one only, and the rest of it will be on file at the town. But because we are asking for the waiver on the boundary survey, we cannot stamp the plan. And because we cannot stamp the plan, the registry will not accept it.
Okay. That's something, I guess, I didn't realize that went with the waiver of boundary survey is just something to keep in mind.
I'm not sure. We'll discuss that when we get to waivers. I've not seen a legal analysis like this before, and I know that we've had lots of site plans that we reviewed that had no surveyor at all. It was just an applicant drawing things on a pencil. So I'm not necessarily sure that I agree with the analysis that says you can't record it. However, perhaps a resolution that sort of keeps us from having to resolve that problem tonight is to consider whether we would ask the applicant to submit it, and if it's rejected, then that's the end of it, and the waiver sort of would take effect. Perhaps that's an approach we could consider as a Board. And I think if you offer it up to them and they won't take it, well, then you've done what you can, but at least we've tried to. I like having things recorded much better than the alternatives.
Yeah, I do, too, and I didn't realize that we were locking ourselves out of being recordable when we granted the waiver of the complete site plan.
I don't either, and I don't think the applicant did, because he would have brought up the second waiver way back when we did it before rather than now. So I think probably everybody's sort of facing this anew, but either way, if it's the will of the Board, I think, telling, asking the applicant to offer it up to the registry and see what happens, and if they accept it, then we're done, and if they don't, then...
Ah, Mr. Chairman, I've just read, if I may barge in, if you go to 676-18-2, subsection A, notwithstanding the provisions of paragraph in Roman Number One or Roman Number Two, the Register of Deeds may accept for recording a plat without the licensed land service seal if such a plant was in existence on December 31, 1969, which I'm sure the brewery was working then. No?
No.
Or if the plat's been incorporated into deeds or other instruments recorded before town zoning ordinances or planning board subdivision regulations, or both.
I'm not sure whether we meet those criteria.
I don't think we meet those criteria. It was the 1969 I was trying to get at.
Yeah. I think that if I was going to look into this further, and I don't want to necessarily get tangled up in a legal review, and that's why I sort of offered this other opportunity to see what the registry thinks of it, but I'm not sure that a plat and a site plan are necessarily the same thing, so I'm not even sure that we're in the right statute when we're looking at this, but...
Hold on. You got them all right. I just read...
But from experience, we know that we've had any number of applicants come and scribble on something that they yanked out of the file, and it's been recorded.
Usually, if it doesn't meet the recording standards, then we wouldn't require it to be recorded.
And that's, I guess, the same thing that I was suggesting with this, is that if it doesn't meet the recording standards, which you wouldn't know until you offer it up, then it doesn't have to be recorded. But anyway, let's not get tangled up on that one too much, because I think it's kind of a minor issue.
Okay.
Nelson, more?
New subjects. Could you explain a little bit about how the stormwater plan meets with the phasing plan? You talked about phasing certain parts of this. Is the whole stormwater plan going to be implemented at once, or are we going to phase that as well? Because the plan itself doesn't talk to phasing. The stormwater plan, I mean, didn't talk to phasing.
So last time we were before you, we had two separate areas. We had the warehousing area in the northeasterly part of the site, and we had the courtyard, which included the packaging and brewing addition. And what we did at that time was, we said we were going to accommodate any new runoff or any increase in runoff in the courtyard area by building a big subsurface system in the warehouse area where we would handle runoff from existing areas to offset new improvements within the courtyard. Now that we're doing a phased approach to this project, we didn't feel comfortable going with that same approach because we're not sure, again, what's going on with phase two as part of the project. So what we've done is, we've left the warehouse stormwater area the same. It's the exact same as we proposed it back in April. And what we've done is, we've added a smaller system within the courtyard area, and I can show you on the plan in a second where it is, but it will accommodate roof and sidewalk and grassed areas within the courtyard.
Can I ask a question, just to follow up on the functionality of it? I mean, please do show me where it is, but I guess the point is, if you undertake phase one and stop there, will you have a stormwater plan that improves the current conditions over what they are today?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know. That both phases were going to be effectively managed by a stormwater plan.
Okay, that's what I wanted to be sure of. Thank you. And the other thing was, is there any change to the effluent from the brewery that affects the wastewater treatment plant? And if so, has that been reviewed with the wastewater treatment plant?
So essentially, what I would say is it'd be negligible. I can't personally speak to if that's been discussed with the wastewater treatment plant to date. So it has not been, per Mr. Hudgens behind me, but that is something that we can follow up on and do.
It would certainly be a condition.
So our wastewater still flows through our BRRRR system before, and so we have capacity in that that would continue to handle it as well. But to your specific question, no, we have not done that yet.
And I'll just note that we did receive comments from wastewater, and they had no issues on December 28th.
Okay, so they have reviewed it? So somebody did a...
They didn't speak specifically about their outflow, but wastewater looked at the plan in general.
They saw the plan set.
Okay. It sounds like there's a little more for them to look at. If they're going to change process in here, they're changing operations in some way, it may affect the wastewater treatment.
So we are brewing, I guess, when you say we're changing our operation or changing our process, we are, phase one is adding an additional fermentation cellar for beer fermentation, and it's adding capacity for us to handle additional brewing grains. So I guess what I'm trying to get at is, it's not a radical change to our process. We are continuing to make the products that we make. It's just giving us additional flexibility and to be able to handle some complexity that we currently don't have.
Yeah. Okay, I just wanted them to be aware of these changes, potential changes, before it happens.
Sure.
Although, I guess if they've looked at the plan as of December 28th, they've seen this current set. I mean, maybe they didn't have specific questions asked of them, but...
There's nothing in the set that talks to brewing effluent that I saw.
Well, no, but I mean, obviously, that's on their mind. That's their business, the wastewater, as much as it's... That said, I don't think that there's any reason not to have a condition of approval that says, you know...
Okay, that's all I would ask.
Run it up the flagpole. That said, the message from wastewater has always been that they've got just tons of capacity, so...
True.
I don't think that you're going to run into any headaches with them just to get a piece of paper from them, so... Anything else, Nelson? Oh, Tom, yes.
Yeah, it's not just a capacity issue. It's the nature of the effluent that causes the issues, that has caused issues in the past to wastewater treatment plant. Now, those things have been resolved at this point, but it would be a good idea if they took a look again at what the process is to see if there's any further impact on that.
Fair enough.
I would agree. Thank you. That's all I have at this time.
Mr. Chairman, could I just ask? If you look at the planning staff's memo, it says the conditions have been fulfilled within two years now. You've indicated that phase two is dependent on presumably higher authority somewhere at St. Louis, or somewhere in Belgium or something. Is that going to be a problem, or do you expect you may have to come back to us to talk about phase two? I'm not saying you can't. I'm just trying to understand.
I spoke with Jillian about that today, kind of the timing on phase one, phase two, signing the plan, meeting the conditions. At this point, I would say that when we're looking to have the plan signed for phase one, we're looking to have the plan signed in general, we would not have building elevations and construction details that have been requested for phase two. So we talked about adding a note either on the plan or on the condition of approval to that effect.
We felt that a note that explains that those things would be required before a building permit was issued would satisfy that.
So we'll get the plant, the sort of building site elevations for phase one, and we're going to sign off on that? Or are we going to sign off on the whole plan with the condition that we, they can't start phase two until we've seen the plan?
Right, yes.
Which way is it?
The latter.
The latter. Thank you.
I know it's probably right in front of me, but where are we asking them for their building elevations?
Condition 11 in the staff memo?
Okay, I got you. Right in front of me. Where is that? Any other comments or questions for the applicant? All right, let's manage the public hearing piece of this. Any citizens or butters wish to weigh in and offer the Board any information on this application? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. What's the will of the Board with respect to the waiver requests that the applicants put forward, either individually or in bulk?
Well, Mr. Chairman, we've already waived, effectively, from the April meeting. We agreed to waivers one, two, three, four, as I recall. Waiver five is subject to, seems to be interpretation of law, which is not my field. I would suggest we defer waiver five or ask them to try and get, to try not to lead waiver five, and if the Register of Deeds says, "No, I won't sign," or "You can't register it," or "You can't record it," then I suppose we have to grant it. I don't know how you do it legally or administratively, but that's where I think we are.
I think administratively, if we went down that path administratively, I think that you'd grant a conditional waiver that if the registry determines it doesn't meet the recording standards, then their obligation to record it is waived. If that's the will of the Board to do it, and again, my idea doesn't have to control the day. If you guys want to just grant the waiver, make that motion, and we'll vote on it.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We grant waivers one, two, three, four completely, and put a conditional waiver on item five.
Is there a second for Alister's motion? Second by Mr. Disco. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 6-0-0 to grant the waivers. Is there any more discussion with the applicant on the proposal in general? Seeing none, what's the will of the Board with respect to final action on the proposal?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We grant final approval for the project on the basis of the things that are discussed on the nice memo from Jillian Harris, along with two additional items that the, we have to see the building elevations before they can move on to phase two, and that they're going to have another look at the effluent in conjunction with the Department wastewater treatment people.
Can I clarify part of your motion? I ask you a question about part of your motion. You've asked that we see the elevations. The current condition says the department staff.
Well, I meant the staff, Mr. Chairman. Sorry.
That's just what I wanted to make sure, whether they've got to come see us or the staff.
If the staff satisfy them, then I'm satisfied.
Is there a second for Alister's motion? Second by Nelson. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 6-0-0 to grant final approval. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
That brings us to item four on our agenda, which is Prime Alternative Treatment Center as the applicant and ZJBV Properties LLC. Boy, I can't say that fast. Review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for an application for a conditional use permit and a waiver of full site plan review to permit a Medical Cannabis Alternative Treatment Center, non-cultivation. This site is located at 105 DW Highway in the I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map 2D, lot 21-1. Jillian, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
I'll just note that the request comes in two parts. The first is a conditional use permit, and the second is waiver of full site plan. They are proposing to utilize the currently vacant Digital Federal Credit Union property that's located at 105 Daniel Webster Highway.
Thank you for that, Jillian. I also want to note, I think all of the Board members will have at their place correspondence from the President of Thomas More College on this application, and as we get to the appropriate point for public comment, it would be my intention to either read or summarize this testimony. I don't know if there's anybody here from Thomas More that'll speak directly to it, but I think it's important information for the record to have. Is the applicant here? Please come forward. Please don't forget to sign in on the clipboard, and then when you're ready, introduce yourself and tell us about the project.
Good evening. My name is Brett Ciclick. I am the chief operating officer of Prime Alternative Treatment Center.
Good evening. John Beech, and I'm the chief security officer for Prime Alternative Treatment Centers.
Prime Alternative Treatment Center of New Hampshire intends to establish and operate a non-cultivation facility in an approved district within the town of Merrimack. The purpose of the ATC is to provide registered qualifying patients of the therapeutic cannabis program with appropriate counseling and therapeutic cannabis products to assist in alleviating symptoms which are associated with recognized medical conditions. Prime ATC will ensure that at all times the organization adheres to all local and state regulations in order to remain in compliance. The facility that we are taking over the building, there will be no changes to the property. Really, the only changes will be done internally. Those internal changes do include the addition of a handicapped accessible bathroom on the first floor of the building. We will also be changing or converting the pre-existing vault to what will be considered a security vestibule. The purpose of that room is to check in patients and ensure that they are registered patients of both the facility and of the program before allowing them entrance into the facility to obtain therapeutic cannabis products. Other than that, again, there are no changes to the structure, merely cosmetic changes to ensure that the space is acceptable for our patient base. We did obviously have to submit a security plan so that the town and the chief of police understood our intentions for the building. intentions for the building and how we planned to mitigate the theft diversion of any of the products supplied at the alternative treatment center. There were comments supplied by the chief in regards to our security plan, which were addressed. We did not see any follow-up from the chief, but are able to address any questions or concerns that the town might have.
Thank you, Brett, for your presentation. The first order of business for the planning board is to consider the conditional use permit, which, following the staff memorandum, doesn't require a finding of completeness, but rather a determination that they've met the requirements for a conditional use permit. Is that correct? Got that right?
Yes. Yep.
Are there any comments or questions from members of the board with respect to the items that are necessary for them to establish in order to get a conditional use permit?
Just one question, Mr. Chairman. Is, does the police, do the police have to review it prior to approval of the conditional use permit, or do they prove it as part of the site plan? The police?
They have reviewed it. I think the finding tonight would, would be part of the conditional use permit, whether they need to approve it before it can, the board can approve it, or whether you can conditionally approve it upon their approval, if that makes sense.
I missed, no, I missed something that you said there.
So, I think, I think you can go two ways. I think you can approve the, the conditional use permit tonight with the condition that the police also approve it, the security plan, or you can wait until the police have approved the security plan to approve the conditional use permit tonight, or not tonight, in the future.
Okay. You see it as part of the CUP rather than the site plan?
Yes.
That's, yeah.
Yes.
CUP.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
Yeah, because I didn't see the police approval of this yet. I saw the, the questions and I see the answers, but I haven't got the answer back from our chief.
Okay, thanks, Nelson. Other comments or questions by members of the board? When we do conditional use permits, are we going to do public hearings as part of both pieces, or just required on the site planner?
I think that's up to you. You can do it either way.
Let's have as many public hearings and give everybody a chance to say what they got to say. So, with that, with respect to the conditional use permit, let's open up the floor and see if there's butters or citizens who wish to weigh in. Are there any?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We have two options. We have the microphone here, or if you'd like to sit down for a second, we'll get you the table and we'll have these guys...
That's, I, I think I can function as we are right now. I represent...
You got to talk from the microphone, or we can't get you.
We've got to talk in the microphone. We want you to sign the pad in front of the two gentlemen.
The clipboard there, yeah.
John and Brett.
If I could just pass it on, I've got a copy of...
Take your time. We want to make sure you get a chance to say what you want to say.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Brian Major. I'm an attorney with a law office at 7 Auburn Street in Nashua, and I'm here tonight representing Ramin Hossein. He is the owner of RNH Motors, which is located at 115 Daniel Webster Highway. He is the butter most affected by this conditional use permit request. His property is to the north, immediately abutting the property. I handed out a site plan just so you can understand essentially the layout of his property. He owns two lots. The first is a approximately 6.8 acre lot, which houses his, his used car business now.
Can you, a little closer to the microphone, just to make sure the folks...
I'm sorry.
It's not for my benefit. I can hear you fine. The folks at home don't get it unless you're on a microphone, though, so...
Okay, thank you. He has two parcels, basically. A 6.8 acre parcel, which presently houses his business, which is RNH Cars. It was formerly Merrimack Motors, and it was a SOB dealership for a period of time. He's been there since 2006. And the second parcel is approximately a two acre parcel, which is located immediately to the south of that parcel, which is a separate lot of record now, as you can see by the plan. And my client acquired both parcels with an investment expectancy in the second and smaller of the two parcels. This parcel had a hot dog stand on it for a number of years. Now, it's largely vacant. He has had, his property is zoned I-1, and he has had at various points in times up to 200 cars on his lot, representing an investment of well over a million dollars. Essentially, he is the person most affected by the conditional use permit. Now, this is uncharted waters for, I think, all of us right now. This is something where we don't know where we're going with this right now. If you'd asked him if he objected to this, he'd have to say yes, because marijuana is still basically a Schedule I narcotic under federal law, but we understand the voters in Merrimack approved the ordinance, and the state legislature passed basically the statute which allows this to take place. So, understanding that, he still has concerns about this. We need to make it clear that if this, if New Hampshire goes the way of Colorado and Oregon, and I think there's one more state, and recreational use of marijuana is, becomes basically the law of the land, if you will, in this state, and if the federal government does something to allow this to take place, then this conditional use permit would not apply to this parcel. The parcel's entirely unsuitable if the property becomes, if, if recreational marijuana becomes a reality in this state. If you, if you'd asked me 20 years ago, you know, would there be three states in the nation where you could buy marijuana legally and consume it, I would have said, "You're nuts." But the world is changing, and I understand, we understand, my client understands that there are some medical uses that have been advocated for marijuana. So, with that in mind, I'd say he has some concerns. And the concerns, number one, are security. His parcel, the, the plan I, I handed out to you basically has an orange line drawn through it. And that's where we would propose, I think, under, under your ordinance, and again, I think this is your first exposure to this as well, this is the first we've gotten in the, in the state, says that you have the authority under the statute that you may grant a conditional use permit, and then goes, goes through and lists what you need to consider in order to grant that. It doesn't say you have to, and it implies with it that you can impose conditions. And one of the conditions we'd ask that you consider is that the applicant be required to install basically a fence on the property line, indicated in orange in the plan I gave you. His concerns are basically that people are going to migrate onto his property from this property, and that people will park there. He's had problems in the past with people when, when it was a bank, Triangle Federal Credit Union parking on his property. So, he'd submit to you that this is a reasonable request. It would keep people from migrating. It would improve the security on the part, the applicant's parcel as well, and it would prevent people from coming onto his lot. He sells basically high-end used cars, specializes in Acura's and things of that nature, and it would keep people off his lot. The second concern he has, in, in reviewing the safety plan, we would defer, of course, to the Merrimack Police Department on that, but one thing that was not noted in the safety plan is, my understanding is, right now, banks won't do business with marijuana distribution facilities nationwide. And the problem is, we're going to have a lot of cash on, on hand there. The Department of Health and Human Service regulations allow someone to have up to two ounces of marijuana. Essentially, if, if they're not allowed to use banking facilities and use, and use credit card machines and things like that, with this type of business, there's going to be a lot of cash on hand, and this causes a concern for violence against the facility, if you will, which would take place next to my client's business. There's no mention in the security plan of what's going to be done with deposits, or in, except on, on stage three, number 11, the only reference to that is essentially that one of the protocols to be followed is the cash is to be taken out of the cash drawer and put in the money safe. It's the only reference there to what happens with the funds. He is concerned that this will create a problem in, in the area immediately adjacent to his property. He'd also point out to you that these people that are going to be using the facility that are ill, his argument would be that a lot of these people are on disability insurance, social security disability, and there's going to be a rash of people, people basically utilizing the facility following the first, first, the distribution of social security disability checks when they come out. He'd suggest to you that it would be appropriate to require that people utilizing the facility have an appointment, as opposed to simply walking in, and that this could, this could be accommodated. It would be a reasonable accommodation. This would allow the applicant to control the number of persons on the, on the site. I think there's 39 parking spaces, but if everybody shows up on the third day of the month after they get their check, that could create a problem in the area as well. He's got traffic safety concerns, too, but the facility was formerly a bank, so that, you know, it, it is zoned commercial, so we would, would expect that. So, we would ask that you consider basically, if you grant, if you're satisfied with the safety plan, and if you think the business can be conducted there, we'd ask that under the ordinance, you consider ordering the applicant basically as a condition to the permit to install a safety fence, to provide some buffer there. There is existing vegetative buffer there right now. I walked the site this evening. We would also ask that you require the applicant to maintain that, at least. It's hard to tell right now how much of a screen that is with the, with the hardwood trees having lost their leaves, but there's, there's substantial screening there right now as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a couple of questions about your thoughts, specifically with the fence? I'm confused by that. Are you concerned that people are going to come to the facility and then go for a walk?
And to migrate onto his property.
But they drove there to get to the facility.
We're concerned, we have lots of concerns about this. The, the safety plan addresses that. Whether that happened, whether what happens in practice is what happens with the safety, with the, with the security plan that the applicant submitted, we can't say.
No, but I don't understand what it is that you're thinking that a, a customer of the Alternative Treatment Center is going to do. I mean, they can't stay on the facility to use the product, because it's not allowed by law.
Yes.
So, they've got their product. They got to get back in their car and go somewhere. Why would they go for a walk up the street to, away from their car to... I don't get it.
We're concerned that the presence of high-end cars in the area may lead to more crime in the area.
Okay.
We're concerned.
Okay, I understand.
And it also provides a visual screen as well.
Okay, I understand. Tell me more about the problems in the past when it was Digital Credit Union and the cars were parking on your client's site.
During paydays, essentially, what would happen is the lot would get full, particularly in the wintertime, and there would be cars parked on the hot dog stand lot. People would park there and then walk down and use the, use the credit union. And that became a problem for my client in the past. He said, "Chase, had to chase people off there."
Okay, thanks. Any other comments or questions by members of the board? Thank you for offering your input. I appreciate it. Are there other citizens or butters who wish to weigh in?
Are we able to address any of the concerns at all?
Once we have everybody, we'll give you a chance. Yeah, I'm not going to leave without a chance.
Great. Thank you.
Why don't you actually, if you gentlemen want to allow these folks to use the table, since it seems like we may have a couple. You okay with that?
Okay.
So, my name is Craig Wiseman. I'm the owner of 60 Daniel Webster Highway in Merrimack, which is S&amp;J Motor Company. We're about a quarter of a mile to the south of this property. So, I don't really know exactly what you do, and, and, you know, and I, and I respect that. The name sounds scary to me, right? So, it, it, I don't, so my concerns are the type of people that potentially would be coming to the area to do, to have the treatment done there. I don't know if they're, what exactly it is, and I'm, I'm sure you'll address all of that. So, that end of town is a, is a pretty quiet end of town, because it's, it's right on the Nashville border. It's the, you know, I don't know if there's a police officers here, but there's, I'm sure at night, it's, it's very dark in that area at night, and our concerns is, is a theft concern. With the amount of people that would be coming there for treatment, I don't know what kind. I'm not saying anything negative, but I'm just telling you that when you hear this alternative treatment marijuana, you get, it's, it's a little scary when you start thinking about potentially the type of people that would be coming to get the treatment in that particular area. Then automobile dealerships, I mean, we have, Ramin has plenty of cars, high-end cars. We have between 100 and 150 cars in stock all the time, and we just have concerns over the exposure of that in town. And I don't know if it's the best use of that particular piece of property. It would be the best use for the town. I know as the merchant in the area, I have concerns. And that's, I just wanted to state that.
Thank you for sharing your concerns. I want to be careful for both of the people that are offering public comment. There seems to be a tendency to come close to a little bit of a broad brush painted as to the type of customers that might come to their facility and...
And that's why I said I do.
Who they are and what they mean. Generally speaking, there's a state law that describes a handful of medical conditions, very serious medical conditions, for which someone could get permission to use their facility. I think their numbers are talking about 15 people a day are going to come to buy something that's packaged not that differently from a pack of cigarettes. Maybe it's a little bit bigger quantity, or maybe it's a little bit different kind of packaging, and they come and get it and they leave. They don't use it on the facility. It's not recreational. It's not, I don't, I'm not sure that I even necessarily agree with the attorney's comments that believes that it's necessarily highly linked or highly correlated with people and their welfare checks, or their, their social security checks, or their benefit checks. Maybe that's the case, but I think that's perhaps an assumption that isn't supported by anything that's been shown to me. Now, I get it. I don't want, I don't think anybody wants, and our chief of police doesn't want, and nobody else wants any kind of a crime wave in this. I'm not sure that some cancer patients getting some product from this facility is the highest suspect group that you're going to worry about coming to get one of your cars.
Sure.
But nevertheless, you've got a huge investment in your business, and obviously, you want to protect that, and that's important. Obviously, I respect that, too. Are there other comments or questions by members of the board?
I would only make the observation, Mr. Chairman, that if you're worried about the cannabis, and, and I think the chairman has explained probably better than I could exactly the sort of people going to be there, I would have thought your business were more at risk from young people, I'm being very careful, who might have consumed alcohol and who then go around and do stupid things. I would have thought they were more at risk to your business, and anybody else's, incidentally.
Sure. And if there was, if there was a bar going in up the street, you know, a big nightlife bar...
You have got a bar. It used to be Mamma Mia's. I forget what it's called now, but you've got a bar there. I mean, there are kids in there, can come out of there, having consumed X numbers of drinks, and I don't know. There can be just as much a nuisance, can just as much damage to your business. In fact, probably more than some dear old lady. And if you, if you watched the TV over Christmas and you saw the night, the, the dear lady who's dying of cancer and who had to go, she actually, the, the Department of Health and Human Services gave her a card, but she had to go to Maine. I mean, that's the sort of patient that I think is going to be in prime, and I don't think she would likely to have been a problem for you.
I don't think so. So, but my, my concern in my, you know, when I, when I, you know, I heard about Alternative Treatment Center, the thing I think about was, was, was a, was a alternative drug treatment center. And, and that was, and that was where my, you know, that's how I, because I really didn't understand exactly what was going on there.
Like a treatment center for addictions or something like that?
Right.
The heroin and the opioids.
It would have been a methadone, methadone type of situation, and I don't know if they treat any of those kind of, you know, situations. And if they do, that would be the people. It's not the little old lady, you know, fighting cancer that we're concerned about.
Those are more likely to be the patients that are going to prime than, than the people who are rushing around doing stupid things primarily in Manchester.
I think you do make a good point, and I don't think that the law allows this facility to do both cannabis and heroin addiction or methadone. And I don't think you can do virtually anything else in the facility other than this narrow bit of business. So...
Great. Well, thank you very much.
But thank, thank you for the comments, and I know that the applicant's going to take a chance to respond to these things kind of all at, at once, so hopefully, they'll offer you some information that may help allay some of those fears, because I don't want you guys to have a lot of concern for your business either. You're the biggest, as big a part of the community as anybody else here, so...
Thank you.
Important to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Are there other members of the community who wish to weigh in? I want to take the opportunity, while it's still part of the public hearing, to read the correspondence that was received from Dr. William Fahey, who's the president of Thomas More College.
Mr. Chairman, could I just interrupt one thing? I just wanted to clarify one other thing that was said here, and I'd like the applicant to respond, and that is, somebody mentioned that counseling was going on here, and it's my understanding, this is not a counseling facility. Is that true? Is that true, or is that not true?
There will be counseling that will occur.
There will be.
But there are products that are gonna be, obviously, sold to patients as well. But, you know, because of the nature of the medicine, and the fact that it is, obviously, new to many patients, there will be a significant amount of counseling between technicians of the Alternative Treatment Center to help educate new patients who are unfamiliar with cannabis medicines, so that they are able to use it safely and successfully as well.
They are prescribed elsewhere, though. Is that true, or is that?
Yeah, so it's not a prescription, it's a recommendation or certification from their physician, and that will occur off-site, correct?
It's a little bit of semantics, because prescribing is federally regulated, so physicians don't prescribe their product.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that, because it was kicked around here. Thank you.
Thank you for the questions with that. I've been supplied with an email, which has been given to all of the board members from Dr. William Fahey. It's also been forwarded to me by Maureen Mooney, who's one of their board members and a friend of mine. I respect both of these individuals and their opinions, although I don't necessarily agree with what they have to say, but I think that it's important to enter into the record, because I think that they're very thoughtful individuals. The correspondence from Dr. Fahey says, "As president of Thomas More College of Liberal Arts at Six Manchester Street, I'd like to express my grave concern and, in fact, strong opposition to the creation of a medical cannabis alternative treatment center at 105 DW Highway. I am only now returning from my own Christmas break and seeing the notice that was mailed at some point in late December by the town of Merrimack. I recognize the state of New Hampshire's approved the limited use of cannabis for therapeutic use. I deeply regret this controversial decision. I hold with the federal government's conclusion that such sites are not prudent, and so-called therapeutic cannabis has not been subject to FDA scrutiny. Furthermore, this site is immediately across the street from the campus of Thomas More College of Liberal Arts. The placement of a site at that location is detrimental to the normal operations and business of Thomas More College for several reasons. One, it places, its placement seems contrary to the intent and spirit of common drug-free zone rules, which would prohibit such a building within a thousand feet of a school. Thomas More College does not allow the possession or use of such drugs on its campus. It is contrary to our principles. We request that, in fairness, the zoning rules be applied in this case. Two, Thomas More College regularly hosts activities for schoolchildren. We have weekly ballet courses for grade schoolers, for example. Our students are regularly involved in teaching and internships which are parochial, with area parochial schools. Gate City Charter School, immediately adjacent to the college, has asked that our students act as tutors to the children at GCCS. The proposed presence of the facility both compromises future events that we would regularly hold, creates an insecure environment for local schoolchildren, and, again, seems inconsistent with drug-free zone regulations in effect. Three, Thomas More College is an observant Catholic institution. Given the cloud of controversy surrounding cannabis facilities, such as the one proposed, the presence of this facility will be harmful to our corporate image, especially to the sense of safety and wholesomeness rightly associated with our college. We would anticipate a decline in applications if a cannabis site became established with a few hundred feet of our campus, within a few hundred feet of our campus. The most recent Catholic pontifical documents, I'm sorry, number four, the most recent Catholic pontifical documents on drugs call into question whether such cannabis centers are legitimate or, in fact, only serve to further a destructive drug culture. There seems an obligation to voice opposition to such a project in light of the cloud which continues to hang over cannabis. Five, I do not believe that there exists a proper study on crime associated with the presence of cannabis distribution centers. Until an impartial study can be made available, I believe that the default setting of the community should be cautionary. Certainly mainstream news sources from Denver, Colorado, have reported that crime has risen in association with cannabis dispensaries. I believe there is a serious obligation on the part of the town of Merrimack to investigate the public safety issues, and do not see what benefit comes to the community in light of such a proposal. I certainly see not, see no reason to grant any waivers to the applicant in light of the gravity of this decision. Therefore, as a community of observant Catholics and a citizen of a state already saddled with a growing drug problem, Thomas More College will publicly oppose the creation of a cannabis distribution center. Legal action will be considered, as well as regular peaceful protests similar to those which our students undertake readily against abortion clinics. I would prefer to avoid any such activity, since I do not wish to draw any negative attention to our community. It is a very good community, I would like to see it keep its reputation. I will be addressing the matter in the January Thomas More College Board meeting, which is why I include Patrick Monahan of the American Center for Law and Justice, our chairman of the board, Michael Gillerman of Burns &amp; Levinson, vice chairman of the board, and the Honorable Maureen Mooney, resident of Merrimack and board officer and secretary. Thomas More College is very happy and very proud of its place in history in Merrimack. We urge the planning board of the town to disapprove the application by prime alternative treatment centers and ZJBV properties. Respectfully, William Fahey, PhD, president of Thomas More College. So, that's the end of that correspondence, and that'll be entered into the record. Are there any other citizens or abutters who wish to weigh in? And with that, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll offer you an opportunity to respond to what has been offered up by the public.
Great, thank you, I appreciate it. And we obviously understand the concerns of the community. You know, in regards to not having a bank account and the facility being, basically, you know, carrying a fair amount of cash, we do, in fact, have a bank account with Century Bank. We will make deposits just like any other normal business will. We do have the ability to use debit cards as a part of the transaction process, which, you know, we found that most patients do prefer, just because it's kind of the way that people have gone for normal purchases. So, as far as tremendous amount of cash being on hand, that will, in fact, not be the case, because we understand that is a security vulnerability, and do not wanna put ourselves in that type of position. As, you know, you've addressed earlier, this is not to be considered an alternative treatment center like people who are addicted to opiates and are looking for treatment or an alternative to those types of products. In fact, there will be no consumption of product onsite, merely, patients will come and pick up product, much like they would a prescription, although it's not a prescription, and go back to their residences, which is the only place that they are legally allowed to consume the product in the confines of their own home. So, you know, I hope that that helps to kind of subside some of the fear around this. And, you know, as far as a raising of crime, there have been independent studies conducted to show that there is not a raise of crime in areas in which dispensaries are located. I would say that the primary patient base is elderly, fifty-five and older, and they are obviously coming to our facility with extremely debilitating conditions and symptoms, such as cancer, Parkinson's disease, Crohn's disease, and many others. So, these are not patients or people who are just looking to get high. That's not what medical cannabis is. It is a therapy, just like any other medication. And, again, the people coming to the facility are extremely ill. They are our neighbors, they are our families, they are our friends. Whether they will admit that to you or not, that is, in fact, the case, and that is what we've seen in every other state that does allow the use of therapeutic cannabis. I think also, too, the federal government's, you know, removal of spending to interfere with the state's will to adopt and regulate medical cannabis businesses is important to note, because, obviously, if the federal government has as much of an issue with it as they did, they would've not removed that funding and would still be targeting dispensaries as criminal enterprises, which is not the case.
Any comment?
No, thanks. Brett, I think you covered a lot of it. The, this operation, very similar to what you'd see at your local Rite Aid, your Osko Drug. It's, the only difference that you'll see here is the product is, is not a prescription drug, it is an alternative to those prescription narcotics or drugs that you may pick up at a local pharmacy. There would be no loitering of persons on the property, people walking around the property, obviously, from a security perspective, is a concern. Anybody who would be using the cannabis onsite would be, be a one-time and only, would be reported to the police. That is a crime to use onsite, and the medical marijuana code would be revoked by the state. Anybody who, again, is loitering on the premises would be asked to leave. Anyone, if we have issues with patients who are loitering, we can certainly remove them from our, our registered patient list as well. We want to be good neighbors, we want to be good partners in the community, and willing to address any concerns, even after the meeting. If any of the abutters have concerns, we'll certainly be willing to, to address those personally.
Thank you for addressing that. It's not really our place to weigh in on the legislative decision to legalize medical marijuana and what the pros and cons of it are, although that's some of what we're getting in the correspondence from Dr. Fahey and some others that have some concerns about it. I, I've met Dr. Fahey a little bit, and I know Maureen Mooney very well, and I respect both of their opinions, but I think that they, their institution, Thomas More College, is quite unique. Very unique course of study for people that have a real calling towards the kinds of things that they teach and the things that they do, and that runs hand-in-hand with people of very, very high moral character. And I don't think that even if you were the worst of the worst facilities, the, the class of students that they have would be tempted or troubled or influenced in any way by something like that. I just think that they've got a different, different group of folks there. With that, are there any other comments or questions by members of the board?
Could I ask one question? And I was really picking up on what you said, Brett. You said they wouldn't be on your registered list of patients. Does that register have to go anywhere, or is it just purely safe, it's your own prop business, and it doesn't go to the state or anywhere?
It's, it's actually, the state's list, however, they, the state and the patient picks or selects an alternative treatment center. There's, there's four throughout the state.
Yeah.
They select the particular treatment center which they want to belong to. So the list is the list of registered patients from the state of New Hampshire, Department of Health and Human Services. That list gets kind of narrowed in scope by those that select us as a treatment center.
It's based on regional thing, isn't it, basically? If you're in Hillsborough or Merrimack, you're gonna come here.
Typically, I think it's geared for that, so you don't have to travel a hundred miles to, to, to get your, your medicine. But it's not, if you live in Hillsborough County and you wanted to, you could drive to Coas County to, to do that.
But, but what you're telling me, which is what I was seeking to get, is the fact that every patient is effectively registered with the state.
That is correct, yes.
And I think the other parallel, I would just pick you up, and you say there's, it's just like going to Rite Aid. Well, no, I don't think somebody's gonna walk into your business thing with a gun and take, what, ten tons of heroin out. I think your security would be rather better than Rite Aid's, but that's an opinion.
Well, yeah, the, the process is the same, however, from a security standpoint, there is so many levels of security there, that if, if we were your target, it would be a lot more difficult than it would be your local drugstore, just because of the layers of security, that, visible and non-visible.
Thank you.
I think also the sense that your, I appreciate what you said about banking and having a bank account and using debit transactions, but even if you weren't, I think that the concerns that you have a lot of cash or disproportionate amount compared to other businesses probably isn't completely tuned in to the amount of cash that some other local businesses have on hand, because.
Absolutely.
A lot of consumer businesses have tremendous cash transactions and might have surprising amounts available.
And not the level of security that we would have as well.
Some of the things that your neighbor's brought up, I wanna talk about when we get to site plan and things. So right now, we're just dealing with this conditional use permit bit, so I don't wanna sort of forget or leave those, especially with the car dealer to the north of you a little bit. I wanna talk about some of the concerns they had, but it really fits more with the site plan discussion than with the conditional use permit one. Other comments or questions on the conditional use permit?
Just one other thing. I wanted to get this distance right from the Thomas More College. The conditional use permit says that, that this use would not be allowed within a school zone, per se. And I don't see anything on this map that shows me the school zone, and maybe it's not, doesn't reach here.
School zones aren't around colleges, that's the thing. They're just not, they're not counted.
They're not counted on colleges.
Right. But the Thomas More property is well within a thousand feet of the bank, and.
It is, yes.
The driveway off of Merrimack Street, I played with Google Maps a little bit, is between eight fifty and nine hundred feet. The entrance to the driveway to the entrance of their driveway.
Yeah.
But the properties are actually physically right across DW Highway from each other.
Yeah. So, it's, but it's not a school zone because it's a college, is that right?
College. School zones are public school.
Yeah. Now, this childcare, daycare center, we've done the same with that, I presume?
It's not a designated school zone either, a daycare. It's a public and private elementary and secondary schools under state statute.
And that doesn't fall in the, in the CUP, doesn't speak, address to those type of institutions?
Daycares?
Yes.
No, it's designated drug-free school zones.
Just drug-free school zone, okay. I wanted to be sure we weren't trespassing in those areas in any way. My other questions have to do with the site plan, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? What's the will of the board with respect to the CUP?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we grant the CUP as specified in the, in the memo, but subject to clarification, ratification, whatever you like, by Chief Doyle or a member of his team.
Is there a second for Alister's motion?
Second.
Second by Ms. Falk. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six zero zero to grant the conditional use permit. That brings us to the site plan consideration, which isn't sort of, as it listed, a separate agenda item, it's kind of part of the same. And I would imagine the presentation that you've offered us, explanation is much the same as well.
Correct.
I don't know if you want to offer anything else as an introduction before we sort of ask some questions about some of the aspects of it.
Not, not in particular, no.
Okay. Now, your neighbor to the north has asked for the installation of a fence, which, if we were looking at different classes of use, like industrial and commercial, abutting each other, we would buffer them in a couple of different ways. And you got kind of a wooded buffer, but you're both commercial sites as it is, so there wouldn't be a requirement that you buffer that. Are you, what do you think of your neighbor's request, first of all?
I mean, to be honest, I don't know if it's necessarily warranted, just in the sense that, you know, John mentioned earlier, anybody who would even consider loitering the property and exiting the property on foot to, you know, go onto one of the abutters' property, obviously, we would have an issue with, that would be suspect to us, and we would, obviously, intervene. I don't believe that anybody has a reason to leave their vehicle and start walking around the neighborhood aimlessly. I don't feel as though that's a legitimate concern, although we do understand, and I think that really, once we are in operation, granted, obviously, approval, you know, we would be more than accommodating to the, all of our neighbors, all the abutters, to understand that our patients are merely coming to the facility to acquire their legal medication and will leave the property. That's my, my feeling on it.
Jillian, if the applicant wanted to build a fence there, how close could he build it to the road?
As far as I know, there aren't any regulations out.
There are. He could build it right up to the edge of his property.
But the, the, the right-of-way for Daniel Webster Highway goes well back into their property.
Yeah, so it would have to stay on his property.
He has to stay on his property, that's correct. But from this, this map, and our PC map, Mr. Chairman, it looks like it could come right to the roadway, almost, right, looks like right up to the sidewalk.
The plan that, the Merrimack Motors Plan, looks like there's actually some bit of difference there, but anyway, I guess it doesn't really matter. My sense is, it probably would hear something from the state if you got too close to the highway. If you don't go all the way to the highway, you don't stop anybody from walking. Nevertheless, I, since they are like uses, both commercial, I don't know that's something the planning board could require of you, but just in the sense of being neighborly, you may wanna think about what keeps peace with the folks next door and solves yourself a little bit of heartburn.
Absolutely.
Especially since a stockade fence isn't terribly expensive kind of a concept, but I'll leave that for you to think about and consider. More significant to me is the notion that some overflow volume from your place is gonna try and park on this poor guy's property, because they don't have any right to do that.
Correct.
What would you do to control that if he came over and knocked on your door and said, hey, your, your folks are over here on my place? What would you do about it?
You know, I, I think that we would, obviously, signage is something that we'd be more than willing to accommodate if that was something that the abutter felt as though was needed. You know, obviously, education to our patient base to help them understand that the only available parking for them is onsite on our property, they're not to park anywhere else. You know, our expectation as far as patient traffic, I really do not believe is going to exceed the amount of parking spots that we do have currently available. But if there was an issue and patients were parking, obviously, off. was an issue and patients were parking, obviously, off of our property, on someone else's property, that is something that we would more than immediately address and ensure that it does not happen again, as much as we possibly can, and we are willing to, obviously, go above and beyond to ensure that that's the case.
I know you don't necessarily read the future any better than the rest of us do, but what do you think your volumes look like?
I think, you know, at least initially, we don't expect to see more than 25 to 50 patients on a daily basis. I wouldn't expect, really, in the first year to two years of operation, to see more than 100 patients. You know, really, it all depends on, obviously, the physicians and how many are willing to certify patients, because they are the gatekeeper to this program, but that is our projections at this point in time.
25 to 50 a day, and maybe some growth after that?
Correct.
I know that patients can come whenever they want to. You don't do appointments?
We do initially for their initial consultation, so their first visit is appointment, or by appointment, but thereafter, we don't want to limit patients to particular timeframes, just to prevent any issue with patients needing to obtain their medication and not be able to get an appointment in a timely fashion. That's just not the way that we have thought about conducting our business. I wouldn't say we would, you know, rule it out, but just not our approach at this point in time.
So your hours are 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., five, six days a week?
Correct. And we believe that's more than adequate time for patients to get to the facility before, during, or after working hours, and should create enough of a, you know, timeframe so that it's not extremely congested.
How many employees are you going to have at 10?
You know, at most, we expect to have 10 full-time employees, but I would expect us to get, it would take some time for us to get to that point.
How many parking spaces you got?
I believe we have a total of...
Thirty-nine.
Correct, 39.
So if you had 10 employees with a car, that's 10, you have 29 more for your people.
Correct.
And so, depending on what your volume looks like, you'd have to have quite a rush to run out of spaces on your own site?
Correct.
Can I just mention the parking issue a little bit? We will monitor that, especially now, knowing in advance that that is an issue to our neighbor. If we ever get to the point where our parking gets beyond our assigned parking spaces, we can post the area appropriately, the section abutting his property, no parking, and enforce that. We will have cameras throughout the property for which to monitor that. We have staff there at the facility as well, that can, that can monitor that physically and through the camera system. So I think, I'm real confident that we can mitigate any issue with parking on his property.
Talk to me about the drive-through lanes. What are you going to do with those?
Yeah, so those are going to be decommissioned. That was obviously left over from the previous tenant, and there will be signage, obviously, noting that there is no longer a drive-through applicable to this property into the business, so they will not be utilized.
They'll still physically be there?
They will still physically be there, correct.
Not crazy, but I'm still physically being there, just because if you're moving in there, you're not allowed by law to have one, then what's the point of them physically being there?
I understand the concern, and I believe that we could remove them if that was requested, absolutely.
Probably would give you some more parking, too, because you could rearrange that section, which has had quite a bit of pavement.
Absolutely.
I don't think, I trust you that you wouldn't use them, because you're not allowed by law to use them, and you're not going to risk your livelihood to do that, but the optics of having drive-through lanes on your building isn't going to help you any more than it's going to help anybody else, just because people will, in the same way they talk about liquor stores on the interstate.
It wouldn't be too difficult to put some sort of barrier there. I mean, a sign doesn't do, doesn't do anything for me. I'd much rather like to see a nice steel bar across both sides of the drive-through lane, which would effectively discourage anybody trying to drive through, I would have thought.
Absolutely.
I think that that would certainly be effective, but frankly, I think you'd have a better-looking building and a better operating site, just got rid of them, and I don't know what that cost you, but I like that better. Other comments or questions on site plan stuff? Nelson?
Just a couple. First of all, I would say that I like the suggestion of removing the drive-in window altogether, and it would give you some more parking. I would also suggest that if it became a problem with parking, you probably have space on this site to create additional parking.
That's correct.
And so that's something to just keep in mind, that you could do that in the future as an expansion of parking that's there, if it became necessary. It doesn't sound like it'll be necessary from what we've heard here tonight. I wanted to ask you about signage, and what sort of advertising are we going to see on this building and on this property?
Sure, absolutely. You know, we are regulated by the state in regards to signage. You know, there will be no neon signs or flashing green leaves or anything of that nature, really just something to identify the business name and the address. You know, those are the restrictions that we are going to abide by. There is a sign from the previous tenant that is in the right-of-way, that is identified on this plan, that will be removed, just so that, obviously, we're in compliance with both the town and the state, but in regards to signage, merely just a logo and the name of the business. And I do not believe it will be illuminated at night, just, you know, signage to identify the business.
Okay, I wanted to just know what that was, and I'm glad it's just identifying your business by name and not your product by name, okay? The external lighting on this site, what do you propose there? Is it going to be changed in any way?
Yeah, we'll do a lighting study of the facility. Obviously, going in, there is existing lighting there. It's probably not sufficient, we're probably going to add additional lighting there. In order to do that, we have to get a study of the facility at night, the current lighting conditions, and then add lighting in those areas, specifically where it would, obviously, the parking lots, the building entrances, exits, perimeters, and all of the accessways. So there'll be a study of the lighting deficiency of the facility there, and then if deficient, we will add those lighting where required.
Okay, we, there are regulations regarding lighting, town regulations, and I would expect that you would be following those if you did that, and I think that should be a condition if they're going to do lighting changes to this plan.
Particularly, they are on one of the flight paths into Manchester Airport.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
They're in, they are effectively in the flight, one of the flight paths into Manchester Airport, so they've got to make sure there's no light going up and all those sort of good things.
Yeah, there's certainly some regulations about the light going up. The one thing that sort of concerns me about that is, part of your effort to waive full site plan review is that you're not making external changes, and then the light plan is kind of an external change that would normally spur us to take a look at your light plan and see what you do, not just for upward-facing lights, but spill over onto other property and all of that stuff is regulated, and differential between light areas and dark areas, even though some, the dark area may not be completely dark, there's a regulation of the differential between the two, and all of those kinds of things. So I think that we ought to think about how we consider that as we decide what to do with the application that you put forward tonight, as in terms of finals. Nelson, do you have more comments or questions?
No, that pretty much does it, other than things that we want to include in the, in the approval, if we give an approval, have some things to add.
I have some comments and questions about the documents that you've provided, and I've got several, and part of the question is maybe something that you can provide a little bit of relief on. I got four documents, I think, and none of them have headings or titles as to what they are, and I kind of figured out what they are, but can we actually have a set that says, like, security plan on the security plan?
Sure, absolutely.
That sort of thing.
And number the pages, yeah.
Yeah, number, in your security plan, I've got four of these, and I don't know what's the difference between, I could not find anything different about them. Why do I have, what's the difference between four pages?
I don't believe there are any differences. I know that they do identify both the top floor and the bottom floor. I'm not sure if there's just extra copies. Obviously, the purpose is to show the security measures in which we are taking for the building, but between the four different copies, I don't believe there should be any difference.
Okay. So we just need one copy?
Sorry about that. Sorry.
No problem. I mean, it's, certainly, a number of copies can be something that anybody gets connected with their application, doesn't have exactly, but it just took a while to figure out, there's no difference between the two.
Sorry about that.
Okay, so, the one that starts with prime ATC is a state-licensed alternative facility, one page signed by you, what is, what's this one, and what kind of title can we put on this?
That was mainly a narrative or...
So that's a narrative intended for us?
Correct.
Okay. I know that we've sort of reviewed the information, and I'm perfectly fine with it. If it's intended to be a communication to the board, can you address it to me for the file and chairman of the board?
Absolutely.
And we'll put it in the file, and we'll know what that one is. The one that's 1 through 13, and it's signed by, oh, I can't read the names, John something, and the property owner, this one?
Yes.
What's that?
That is actually, I believe, the second page of another document. There should be another page attached to that. If there is not, I will make sure that I send it to you. That was something that was asked by, by the town, just to show that we are going to be compliant with the local or the municipal regulations for an alternative treatment center.
Well, I've got a, well, double-sided, two-page document that's got a similar list, but it's got 14 items on it instead of 13, and it's not signed.
Yeah, so, I am still awaiting the signature from the building owner. That is something I was not able to obtain over the holiday season, but I should be able to obtain that this week.
Okay, so what's the 14th, what's the added item on the list in the longer document?
I believe the only difference... I'm not quite sure what exactly, which one you're looking at, where the addition came from.
There's a couple of changes on that. If you look at numbers 1 through 13, and then 1 through 14 on the next one, like, the top two things are different between the two, that document, so...
Very well, could be just a changing of language that was recommended by the town.
Okay. So is this longer one, that's several pages long, is this intended to replace this one once it gets signed?
Correct.
Okay, so let's do that, we'll get rid of that one, get us assigned one of these as a condition, and we'll be happy with that?
With headings.
With headings on, as to what they are?
Absolutely.
I see the difference.
What's that?
Number three is added to the 14 list. No cannabis products will be disposed, and it's not on the 13, delineation of 13 items.
So 13 became 14 by the addition of number three?
Yeah.
And then there may be some slight wording changes in some of the others?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, glad to see that addition. Okay, so once this one gets signed, it'll be the one in the file, and this one will discard, so we've got three things to look at now, we know what they are. Okay. Any other comments or questions by members of the board with respect to the site plan? Let's take care of our business appropriately, then, we've got to accept this site plan as complete for review. Let's roll the board on that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept this, the application for full site, for this site plan as being complete and ready for us to discuss.
Second? Second by Desiree? Any discussion?
Yeah, just curious, if they're asking for a waiver, a full site plan review, and we're accepting this, is that...
I believe that they are asking for that, but we would take up that waiver after we accept it.
Okay.
Accepting the application.
Right.
Not the site.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, it's a motion to accept the application as complete. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 600. I know that we did a public hearing for the conditional use permit a little while ago, but that's a separate item, so let's open up a public hearing for the site plan review, see if there's anybody that wants to offer any additional comments other than what was offered before, or in addition to what was offered before. Seeing done, we'll close the public hearing. What's the will of the board with respect to the request to waive full site plan review?
Mr. Chairman, I sort of latched on to what you said. I think, whilst I don't think we need a full site plan review, because they really, apart from possibly knocking down the drive-through, they're not changing very much, but in view of the fact they're going to require to meet the police and everything else, full security, lighting, I think we should have a wish, we have a wish that we'd like to see a lighting plan prepared once they've decided where they're going to put the lights. We could do that in one of two ways. We could do, have a compliance hearing, which I know none of us really get excited about, or we could say we could leave it to the staff to vet a suitable lighting plan that we would direct that should be submitted to the staff.
I think it's a good request, and I support the latter of the two choices that you've offered up, and let the staff receive it and, and consider it.
I would be okay with that, but it'll probably take an outsider review to look at the, to look at the lighting plan, to see that it meets requirements.
I think we could make that determination in-house.
I don't think it's a CLD level, Nelson, do you? Are you thinking CLD?
Well, if it's done with the modeling and all of that, the way we normally do a lighting plan.
I mean, normally, the lighting plan is something that is part of the peer review when something gets peer reviewed, but if Gillian believes that the staff can manage to take a look at the sighting plan, and we don't even know, they may look at it and decide that their lights are fine the way they are. They might say, we're going to add one wall pack over here by the building, who knows? I mean, if they ask 20 lights, and maybe the staff says, we can't figure this out, so... But, what do you think, Gillian?
I have full faith that we could do it.
I'd support that.
Mr. Chairman, I therefore make a motion that we grant a waiver of full site plan, but require the submission by the applicant of a lighting plan to the staff of the community development department to be approved before we can sign off on their application.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion?
Second.
Second by Counselor Mahan.
Based on what, what state statute, option one or option two is the waiver?
For waiver of full site plan review, I don't know that we've necessarily...
You don't need to waive it, because it's, it's an existing building, it doesn't, we don't need to do anything. We haven't, we waived the site plan for the brewery. It's not a sort of hard luck waiver, it's a, it's a waiver because it's not needed. I think it's a difference, but I hear your point.
I think probably it would fit under the first criteria anyways, the strict conformity is not necessarily hardship.
All right, okay.
But I do have a question for Gillian. When we did the conditional use permit, we've already considered and required the applicant to meet the chief of police's requirements, there's no need for that to be a condition of approval for the site plan? Or would it be?
No, I would say that that would be a condition of the conditional use permit.
Okay.
About removal of the drive-through?
I would support the removal of the drive-through, if that's the intent of the folks, to put that as part of the conditional approval.
Is that a condition now, or are we going to add that as a condition?
That would need to be added as a condition.
Okay, then I would like it added, and, yeah, okay, I think we're set on the other, the parking expansion, I think, is there, and I don't think they need to show it. And so, I, oh, state highway permit, state highway driveway permit, is that in your list of things?
Yes, it should be.
The state of New Hampshire will have to approve that driveway?
Yeah, correct, it has been submitted, and I believe between yesterday and today, they were going to issue.
Okay, that'll be a condition, then.
Yeah, it's number two.
It is a condition?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Alistair and Tom, you are the maker and seconder of this motion. Are you agreeable to amending 5...
No, we just waived the site plan thing, or you'd like to include the demolition. Yeah, I'm happy to put the, but the drive-through should be eliminated.
And then that would have to be shown on some kind of a piece of paper that they submit, either kind of hand-drawn or whatever, right? Gillian, correct?
Or a note.
Or a note?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, note.
Or both.
What about any additional, any additional parking, indicating any additional parking, if that's what they decide to do with that area? Will you require anything to be submitted for that? I was happy, Tom, because there's so much flat land out there, I was happy that it didn't need to be, maybe a note saying that additional parking will be provided here if needed, kind of thing, in the future. I would, I would be satisfied with that sort of a...
I'm just asking for what your normal practice might be, I don't...
We've done what I just suggested. Some cases, we show a little shaded area that says, future parking if needed, and, but I'd be happy with just the note that says, future parking if needed.
I know that they talked about them having 39 spaces and all of that, I have no idea how this fits in with our parking regulations, since we're not really built for one of these, but what do we know?
We put this under, similar to a retail pharmacy for requirements for parking, which is one for 250 square feet, and they had well above what they needed. for that.
How big is their building? Two thousand square feet, so.
Yeah, they've got twenty-two more spaces than are required by the.
Okay, so they're not even close to that. So generally speaking, when someone's got such ample parking, we don't even sort of have them indicate that they've got expansion capability, even though clearly they do.
I just wanted to make sure, because someday in the future, who knows?
Yeah.
Somebody will object and say they've got people back there, and there's nothing in here that shows that it's there. We've seen that occasionally, I believe, even.
Potentially so. Okay. Any other comments?
Comments?
Questions? Okay. Anybody else? Now, this was, we've done the waiver of full site plan review. This is final approval that we're doing now? I lost my place.
No, this is side agreement.
This is waiver of full site plan review, okay. All in favor of waiving full site plan review, subject to all the conditions we discussed, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six zero zero to waive full site plan review. What's the will of the board with respect to final disposition?
Somebody's got to say it. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we grant final approval, subject to the conditions outlined in the memo from the Community Development Director, Mr. Thompson, dated twenty-nine, twenty-eight fifteen, with the additional things that have been discussed at this meeting, which is the removal of the, he just clarified, we're clarifying under his item five E, that the drive-through will be destroyed.
Did I? No.
Do you have the police? Police?
No, the police thing is in the C O B.
And that's in the other thing.
That's all, I would make a motion to that effect, and that we require a copy of the lighting plan, a suitable lighting plan to be provided to the Community Development Department for vetting.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion?
Second.
Second by Desiree, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six zero zero. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Dean, appreciate it.
I think we probably put things into the waiver of full site plan review that didn't need to be there, and just put those over onto the final approval.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Item five on our agenda is James M. O'Neil, L L S, T F Moran, Inc., as the applicant, and Beverly D. Hilton Revocable Trust, and George L. Hilton Revocable Trust as the owners. Review for acceptance and consideration of final approval of an application for a two-lot subdivision. This site is located on Tinker Road in the R-one residential and Oxford Conservation Districts, tax map two C, lot one-ten and one-ten dash one. Gillian, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Yes, this is an after-the-fact subdivision, which is necessitated by the fact that Tinker Road was relocated by DOT through lot one-ten as opposed to northerly of lot one-ten, as it was originally proposed to be relocated. So this left behind two lots rather than the one, and this subdivision would formalize existing conditions and clear the title, essentially.
Thank you. Please introduce yourself for the record and tell us about the plan.
Good evening, Attorney. There we go. Attorney Michael, I'm here on behalf of the applicants to kind of deal with what staff has just indicated is the issue, is shown on the plan of, maybe this'll work. It's working. What happened here is the vote was going to be northerly of this area that was owned by the Hiltons, and the state then relocated it right through their property and created a de facto subdivision, but there is no plan. In other words, if you went to look for a subdivision plan with a roadway, a town class-five road right through here, you would not find it. And as the board may be aware, I'm sure you are, that merely running a road through property does not necessarily create a valid subdivision. So we're stuck with kind of a interesting situation as a result of the relocation of Tinker Road in conjunction with the Continental Boulevard improvements a number of years back, and I know there are many members and folks that understand that. We then went to the zoning board because, to confirm the plan of lots that are there. We've got size issues. This is one-point-two-one acres, this is about three-quarters of an acre. We didn't really have a frontage issue because we have frontage on two roads, but we requested various variances to more or less bring these lots in compliance for residential use, which were granted by the Zoning Board of Adjustment on December thirtieth. We've reviewed the drainage. The proposal will be for town and state-approved septic systems. In accordance with the regulations, we needed no variances for those, and these will be serviced by town water. I noted from the staff's report, there are a number of items that we have no problem with, they're good suggestions, a couple of minor adjustments to the notes on the plan. Certainly will put stone bounds in. We have no problem with the kind of standard commentary, to a certain extent, that's contained in that letter that's addressed to the board. I don't know what else to say about this. There really aren't any easements. The one thing I will comment on is the sidewalks. There are no sidewalks in this area. We did not submit a waiver because we basically have two lots that already exist. We're not requesting, you know, a planned development here. This is an area that's very rural. I'm sure the board is quite aware of it. We don't believe sidewalks are needed in any event, but because the lots were already in existence, we did not feel a waiver was necessarily appropriate. If one is needed, it certainly would pose a significant hardship for these two lots to install sidewalks in this area. They'd be sidewalks to nowhere. There's no place to effectively link it up for any usable purpose, and I would request a waiver from the board if needed. And that's pretty much it, in a nutshell, Mr. Chairman. Alan, Alex Khan from T F Moran is here. If you have other questions about it, we'll be happy to try and answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Michael. What's the will of the board with respect to determining whether the application's complete?
I move that we determine that the application is complete.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Second by Councilman Mahon. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six zero zero. Any comments or questions by members of the board for the applicant? Nelson?
Yeah, a couple. When this, this was originally one lot, right?
Yes.
And when the state went in there, did they not compensate the owners of this property for the taking, if you will, of their property?
As I understand it, Nelson, looking back, it was a very, very small compensation. This was done fairly quickly, and the Hiltons were trying to accommodate the wishes of the state and others in the Continental Boulevard, Tinker Road relocation issues. But, yeah, there was some small compensation.
So there was some compensation, but they didn't sell the whole lot, which.
The state should have taken the whole thing, quite frankly.
That's where I was going.
But you understand, Nelson, here's what happened. If you go back deeper into the history, this, the plan was to run town sewer here. That was a, an overall plan, but funds dried up for that. If you recall, the federal, we used to get matching funds, you know this as well or better than I do, knowing your history here with this board. And that never happened. And I think at the time this occurred, the state was under the impression that very likely sewer would be run into this area, and then those lots would have been, how do I put it politely, a bit more suitable with the sizes. Because they're not small, small lots. I mean, there are a number of lots in the area that are smaller than these. We're meeting basically every, we're meeting more of the standards than most of the lots in the area regarding setbacks and so forth. So if you had sewer in there, it's less of an issue. But the point here is we're going to have town water, so we don't really have a big issue in that area. The septics will meet the current, I repeat, the current state and local standards for the proposed dwellings. I don't know what else to tell you on that.
Okay, I just wanted that for the record, thank you.
You've got it.
And the other piece is that it looks like they truncated off some of the points.
Oh, really?
Well.
Yeah, Nelson, this, with all due respect, I'm trying not to throw any more of my usual barbs at anybody, but this didn't make a whole lot of sense, and we're trying our best to fix this and make this a workable situation. The little piece to the left, right here, I mean, the state, that, you know, I've talked to them about us trying to acquire that and get that back. That was part of the area that was taken. We went and looked at that, but, yeah, it's truncated off, and this is a piece of land that's just out there. It's, for all practical purposes, for all practical purposes, it's part of our lot, but I can't, I can't tell you that based upon the field survey, but nothing's going to happen here.
It's owned by the town, I take it.
I suppose it's the state. I think the state owns it.
Does the state own that piece of Tinker Road?
I believe they owned it. I think that's part of, was that part of the taking, Alex? That was part of the taking, but it was, again, this was, this was, with all due respect, this was kind of a haphazard change when people were concerned about some of the alignments out on Continental and the Tinker Road bypass area that was constructed. I don't think a lot of thought went into this. It's just my opinion, many years later, looking at this.
I just wanted to know where the ownership was now, if it's with the town or if it's with the pay.
I believe the state, that's part of the state taking, Nelson.
So the state owns Tinker Road?
Well, I don't know, they own Tinker Road, and I think they own this piece, this triangulated piece that abuts us right here.
They do own Tinker Road, that's what I was trying to get to.
I believe the state, well, by the taking, when they did their taking and recorded their plans and their documents, I believe the state took possession of Tinker Road, then they probably turned it back to the town as part of the class-five system here. I don't believe it's a state road now. I think it was part of a state taking, but I don't think it's part of the, it's certainly not part of the state road system.
What does the surveyor say?
I don't know that it was given back to the town after the state did the taking. I'd have to look into that. I'm representing Jim O'Neil tonight because he couldn't be here.
Who plazza?
Okay.
That's a good, you do? Who plazza?
We do.
Oh, thank you. I think that pretty much, that, to me, tells the story.
I think the assumption was, Tinker Road is Tinker Road.
Tinker Road is Tinker Road, and the state participated in a taking to allow the reconstruction of it, but I believe it's still part of the town road system. I think that's correct.
Yeah, they may not have even told the town that they were making this change, the alignment.
I, maybe they didn't. I can't answer that question.
Neither can I.
It never came to the planning board. That's all I have to say.
You want me to keep going? No, you don't, Nelson, trust me.
I'm done, thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, as I looked at the plan, I thought that the decision to go through your client's property was probably made to avoid some wetlands because they could squeeze through that little gap.
Who knows?
In the wetlands, rather than going through some, but it, who knows? You're right, who knows? When was the road rebuilt?
Mid-eighties, wasn't it? I believe it was mid-eighties, Nelson?
I think it was nineteen ninety-three.
No, no. Early nineties.
Mid-nineties, I think it finally was constructed.
I've been around too long. It was, they started talking about this in the late eighties, but it probably wasn't built till then.
Right, it wasn't built until nineteen ninety, ninety-one, somewhere in there. You had a date.
What's that?
You had a date.
I think the final plan of that reconstruction was approved in ninety-three.
Yeah.
But it had been planned well before that, and it had shown coming north.
That was that whole industrial drive.
Correct.
Exit ten.
Correct. Again, it was talked about for a long time, and that's, I think that's where my date stuck in my head on that.
Thank you for that. Any other comments or questions by the board?
Come on, no more, Nelson. We're having fun with the history of the road system here.
Mr. Chairman, given that this whole thing is a sort of trying to put right history, which is, as Henry Ford said, something to do with history, I make a motion that we grant approval of this subdivision, subject to, first of all, we have to have the waiver. The staff recommends we rotate a waiver, that there will be no waivers, because strict specific circumstances relative to the site plan indicate that the waiver will carry up the spirit and intent of the regulation.
What are you waiving, my friend?
What are you waiving?
Sidewalks.
All right, the staff recommends that we consider a waiver. It's fine with me. Is there a second for sidewalk waiver? Second by Desiree, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six zero zero for sidewalk waiver. Before we move on to the motion that I think you're eager to make, we ought to at least gavel open and close the public hearing?
Thank you, sir.
Any public citizens or butters wish to weigh in on the application? Seeing none, let's close the public hearing, and now.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we recognize the situation that has been created by the state in nineteen, whenever it was, and we give an approval for a two-lot subdivision as requested by the applicant, subject to any conditions in the manner of, for Mr. Robert Price, dated twenty-ninth of December, twenty fifteen.
Second for Alistair's motion? Nelson's got to stand up for a second. Any other comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six zero zero. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Now that we've had our history lesson of town roads, we'll leave. Thank you very much for your time today, I appreciate it.
I appreciate you doing it.
There is an update.
What's the update?
According to the last highway, the last state highway, the ten-year plan?
What is it?
If they eliminate exit eleven, the town will be given Continental Boulevard as-is. So if we get Continental Boulevard as-is, then we will then revert back to the true ownership of Tinker Road.
I think we'll keep it. I just assumed, keep it, exit eleven.
I congratulate you now or later.
It wasn't anything we asked for.
If they give you, make sure they repair Continental Boulevard before they give it to you.
The law specifically states.
Don't give anything, let's keep eleven.
As-is.
Let's keep exit eleven.
It was the revenge of representative from the town of Bedford.
Oh, boy. Item six on our agenda is discussion, possible action regarding other items of concern. I have one, which is a memo from Kyle Fox, our deputy director and town engineer, recommending a release of the performance bond for Hamilton Court, which was part of the Cota subdivision. The memorandum from Kyle reads, "A final inspection of Hamilton Court. Part of the Cota subdivision was performed by Public Works Department on December twenty-ninth, twenty fifteen. The right-of-way improvements are found to be in substantial accordance with the requirements of the town of Merrimack. Hamilton Court is a hundred-and-eighty-one linear foot roadway off of Pearson Road, ending in a cul-de-sac. The department recommends that upon receipt of a two-year maintenance bond that the performance bond for the project be released. The maintenance bond is to be in the amount of fifteen thousand, four hundred, sixty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents, which is ten percent of the original bond amount for the project. The department additionally recommends that the planning board recommend acceptance of Hamilton Court by the town council, in accordance with section five-oh-one, five-point-oh-one-point-one of the subdivision regulations, with an additional condition that the road be maintained curb-to-curb prior to the town accepting the road, so that the public works will not have to be to remove unplowed snow from the roadway." What is the will of the board? Alistair?
All right, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we grant the release of the bond, provided the replacement with a maintenance bond, and that we recommend that the town council accept this road, subject to the conditions that the road is maintained until such, by the applicant, until such time as the council gets around to accepting it.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion? Nelson?
Second. A second.
Nelson's second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six zero zero for the performance bond release. I have no other discussion or possible action regarding other items of concern. Does anyone else have any?
I just want to put in one pitch, Mr. Chairman, to the, anyone listening, that we still have an opening on the Lower Merrimack River Watershed Advisory Committee, local advisory committee, and we--
Who've you lost?
Anyone interested in that?
Who've you lost?
Michael Redding has recently--
Oh, yes.
--from that position.
We talked about that last time.
Yeah, we talked about it before, but we haven't had a line of people volunteer for it yet, so I thought I'd put a pitch out there.
That's strange, usually there is.
If someone listening at this hour, they might be interested in something like--
A lot of people listen. I get comments all the time. So, anybody that's interested can certainly, I think, contact you to find out more about it, and contact the staff if they're interested in being considered for that position. Any other discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern? Seeing none, that brings us to the approval of the minutes of our December 15, 2015 meeting. What is the will of the Board?
I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes as written.
So, motion by Desiree to approve them as written? Is there a second?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman, but I'm afraid I have got one or two changes.
All right, there's a second, and let's hear your changes.
On page two, if you go to line 24, there's, it says, "And stated, Allen Road is not constructed through the area semicolon, paper street." I think there's some words missing. I think it's, but it is only a sheet on pa, street on paper. I think it should read--
Area comma or semicolon, whichever you like. It is a--
It is a paper street. You're right. On page three, line 36, the fact is that when they spoke, the fire department, they had mentioned, instead of going through their typical access, they would, which was further north, if they could get an access, they would make it easier for the sparks that come off the trains that are going down lighting something. I think they mean trains that are passing to the site, causing conflagration or something like that. I think, it, that said paragraph wants a little bit of reworking the English. I know what it's trying to say. It's saying that Mr. Kevin does not want to maintain the road, and if the fire department want it, why, the reason they want it is to put out fires that could have been occurred when the train goes past and sparks the undergrowth. I think that's really what he's trying to say, but it didn't really make that very clear.
I, I think you're, you're accurate that it's not very clear. However, to the extent that that conveys what Kevin Walker said--
All right.
--I say we leave it alone.
All right, okay.
So, is that a change? Or no change?
No change. No change in that--
Page five, lines 15 and 16. This is the, about a compliance hearing. I would like it to say, he would like to require, not incorporate, require that there be a compliance hearing to provide the Board the opportunity to review a completed set